Okay. Okay. I call to order the May 24, 2021 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Ms. Bates, would you please lead us into the prayers?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
This is Bates.
President.
Ms. Bolton.
President.
Mrs. Bowers.
Here.
Mr. Lindy. Mr. Messer. Mr. Murawski.
Here.
President Jones.
Here.
I need a motion for a 48-hour waiver to amend the agenda to include the following changes. Board matters will be introduced after hearing of the public. Announcements will follow board matters and will include the addition of a special announcement. Resolutions will follow announcements and will include the addition of two resolutions that you had at your seat. Is there a second? I need a motion, I'm sorry, I need a motion.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda is revised as presented. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your request for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. Okay. We have, wow, what am I missing? I'm missing something, there's a hole in my, there's a gap in my period, hold on. Approval of the minutes? Minutes are approved as this.
We haven't done, you haven't done those yet.
I'm sorry, you haven't done those yet. Okay, yes, right, so we have approval of the minutes. I would like, I need a motion to approve the special meeting of May 6, 2021. The special meeting May 10, 2021, and the business meeting May 10, 2021. Don't move.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Ms. Bowers, please present the May 7 Student Achievement Minutes.
Yes, I have the report for the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee that met on Friday, May 7, 2 o'clock. And I hope I'm pronouncing Ms. Reed's Phylek name correctly. She updated the committee on college credit plus courses. She noted that there were 33 classes have been embedded in 16 of our high schools, and that's exclusive of Walnut Hills, just for the possibility of skewing the data. What I wanted to highlight from this, from this section was that the majority of our 16 high schools offered CDP courses on campus, and that will be from 2019 through 2022. I also wanted to highlight that Ms. Reed Felix, I hope I'm pronouncing her name correctly, provided the committee with data about that we're still, they're still under representation of our black students, male students, as well as our economically disadvantaged students in our college credit plus area. So she did identify that there were at least 170 of our students of socially or economically disadvantaged participated on campus in our school buildings. And a breakdown of where those courses were taken was discussed as far as on campus. The committee also was, we were informed that there were graduates from Riverview East, the School for Creative Performing Arts, and Walnut Hills that received certificates and associate's degrees by their participation in the college credit plus programming. So congratulations to them. There was discussion about concerns around identification of students and regarding the gaps on those students who were taking and participating in college credit plus course. Committee member Bolton identified, and I was in agreement with the grades four, five, and six being offered remediation and the conversation about that being part of the new CPS, new shore area. Ms. Reed Phylek, actually, we're going to bring back the tuition dollars that were saved by our students, saved in the state of Ohio by our students taking these courses at our June 4 meeting. For the Extracurricular Jazz Academy, Dr. Rudnick, my fine arts manager, gave some highlights to the committee about what CPS Jazz Academy has been doing. Expanded to over 65 students, kudos to him for that. Some other highlights were CPS Elementary Jazz Orchestra did a virtual performance at the Global Jazz Education Network Conference in January of this year, and also the CPS Jazz Academy faculty performance at June 10 Cincinnati Black History Month Celebration. Committee member Bolton noted that the OSBA has actually requested that the students of our Jazz Academy to perform during the OSBA conference in November at Columbus for the Capitol Conference. Dr. Rudnick, along with our Superintendent Mitchell and Deputy Superintendent Tiani Amat, worked collaboratively to get our kids involved in the National Association for the Advanced Native Color People Afro-Academic Cultural Technological and Scientific Olympics, also known as EXO. And we had four of our students that were actually medal winners. Two gold, two silver medalists, I'm sorry, and two bronze medalists. Congratulations to those students. Dr. Rudnick also informed the committee that the Kennedy Heights Art Center is now partner with CPS and is dedicated to assisting students competing in the EXO. I also identified or inquired about a mentorship or some type of ambassador opportunity for the students that had currently went through this experience to maybe be ambassador to those coming along throughout the district, just as a continuity and exposure to the national, to the national opportunity. Extracurricular sports, our athletic manager, Josh Harden, reported out to us about ACT support growth. What he did highlight was that there were students who scored between four to eight points, a couple of students, over this last prep session. He said fully engaged students can expect to see a two to three point composite score increase, which I thought was awesome. That four to eight point was a couple of students within our schools that I think were outliers, which did extremely well. There was a conversation about beyond the tassel, students getting, get in the game, how to be a college athlete, and that was representatives from the NCAA, NJCAA, and NAIA, from the panel talking to our students about how to be prepared to compete in college sports. There was also highlights about sports from Walnut Hills. We have some swimmers there who finished sixth or third and second place in the state. And again, our congratulations to our top boys, Division III Regional Champs, that advanced to the state semifinals this year. He gave us insight about Innovate Grant that will help increase athletic training, coverage and sports and support in the district. Macy OT Week at Walnut Hills is a graduate of 2015, who also was a part of the Baylor Bears, and I watched that game, I love basketball, and they did a great job. He also noted about Speak Up and Speak Out, about the life school curriculum that came through the Speak Up, Speak Out group that they were, they desired to have that as part of their curriculum. He identified special events highlights, inclusive of the Chris Nels baseball softball All-Star Game that happened, I want to say a couple of Sundays ago. Ms. Bolton asked if athletics would be expanded for the next school year. And what was expressed from Mr. Harden was that there are some areas and gaps, like in soccer tennis and swimming, and he's going to work with ABC to be more, for that to be more inclusive in our schools. Follow-up topics, Ms. Campbell reported on summer scholars, this starts on Tuesday.
Am I up? You're over, yes.
I'm over, okay, I'm gonna get finished. Social-emotional support curriculum. And I do want to identify that during this report, there was, there were identified pre-K through 12 students enrolled, 9,334. To date, we are over 11,000 students that are actually enrolled. During the time of this meeting, there were 425 staff, inclusive of teachers, paraprofessionals, and intervention specialists. Now we are at 1,000 teachers that are, that are enrolled. So I am going to stop the report, all the other ones were updates, and I'm going to present these minutes as written.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. Superintendent, please introduce the first presentation.
Yes, so this goes along with our committee the whole conversation last week, and our treasurer is going to introduce the five-year forecast.
Good evening. Good evening. You got it up there. So I am pleased tonight to present to you the May forecast. And it's included in the treasurer's report for approval. As you remember, I have to file by the end of May with ODE, so we'll just jump right into it. The purpose, just to remind everybody in the public, the purpose of the five-year forecast is multi-purpose, but mostly to monitor the district solvency in a very transparent way for our ODE and our taxpayers. It helps us make long-term financial decisions and planning in terms of what future revenues we would look like, and it helps guide our budget. And I have to file twice a year, just like all the other 613 or 12 districts in the state of Ohio, and we all use the same format, it's defined by ODE. So some factors that influence the forecast, and this has been a very strange year when it comes to budgeting and forecasting. The state by any budget, which we don't have a budget for next year yet from the state. There's been several versions that have been under consideration, the Patterson formula, and then a weak current formula, and so we'll see what survives that process. So it's kind of a guessing game going forward of what the state revenues will look like. The state foundation formula, if you recall, was frozen. Now, we did receive half of our cutback, so it's going to be a change in this year's forecast, and I'll explain that when we get there. And that the forecast is, the state foundation formula is dependent on district wealth, that was also frozen, and the cap limits were frozen, so that if we continue to grow, we tend to lose revenue. So if you recall, we were losing about $5 million a year over the last prior three years to COVID because we were growing faster than the formula would allow us to grow. So it makes it really difficult to fund new teachers for enrollment and new initiatives based on our state foundation. Pass-through funding is still in place, although it's being under consideration to be taken out, so that would make our forecast look very different in the future. And then we tended towards the lower inflation rate simply because we have pandemic money that can help us shift some costs. So, and we'll go through those. And just also, it's all about the cash. You know, we have to look at a multi-year window with the idea that our revenue is forecasted, and then our spending plan has to allow us to have positive cash flow in the next three-year window. And so we've been able to do that. And so it's just very important because when, if you show a deficit in either of those three-year windows, ODE will come down here and make you develop a plan, and if you don't do that, then they'll come down and tell you how to spend your money. So here's a picture you're used to seeing, this is the makeup of our revenue sources into general fund only. You can see that more than half of our revenues come from property taxes, which do not fluctuate with enrollment. So for every new student we get, property taxes get spread a little bit thinner. And state share is the dark green pie there. The other one, the light green pie chart or slice is the reimbursement of tangible personal property tax and the credits that people receive on their home tax bills. The blue is the CRAs and the TIF monies that we receive on improvements in the city. And then the orange are just other sources of reimbursements, Medicare, E-Rate, any prior period adjustment. So looking at the November forecast compared to where we are now, if you recall, we made a slight mid-year adjustment in February because the triennial update on taxes was bringing in more tax dollars, and we wanted to show that increased revenue to close out that cash deficit. So what I'm giving you is a three-year window on, I'm sorry, the three, the November, the February, and May. You can see it's pretty close in revenues, not much change. We did have smaller state revenues than we'd anticipated, and this is where we reflected the decrease in casino revenues, which I talked to you about on Wednesday night, about a million dollars, just because they were closed, they weren't generating revenue. And then on the state reimbursement, we'd anticipated getting the full reimbursement back, and we only got half, so I've made that adjustment downward. But some of those decreases were offset by increase in TIF payments. So the net effect was about $7 billion reduction. The other piece is, you remember, in our attempts to recognize the tuition assistance that we use in the preschool promise expansion, we had to do this really strange journal entry to show an advance coming on the revenues and then an offsetting transfer on the way out. And I chose not to do that anymore because it's so confusing and it's misleading. It makes our revenues look higher and our expenses higher when they really aren't. And so we're choosing to handle it in a different way. So I've reduced the revenues by $5 million for the value of our tuition assistance that our students use against that levy based on their income. And I've also reduced that transfer on the side. So it's a net a cap, it's nothing, it's zero, it's just very confusing, so I'm taking it out. But those are the changes to the revenues. Here's the long view of the forecast. So if you recall, there's three years of actuals, the current year, and then four years into the future. And you can see that our revenues are tipping upward but very flat, right? So from the beginning of the, pre-COVID to the end of this forecast, we were increasing revenues by $11 million from the beginning to the, to the end. So very small, very small increases. We're hoping that the new budget formula will help us in that regard because we need the help. So moving on to the expenditure side, showing you the same pie chart about how we spend our money. The two blue pie slices, the dark blue and the light on the right, which are very small when you compare to other districts, simply because we were heavily outsourced, all of our transportation is outsourced, a lot of our technology contracts are outsourced. And so those show up in purchase services instead of salaries. The next big pie chart is the green one, the green slice, and that is purchase services. So it's all our tuition, all our outsourced contracts. And then the yellow slice is the school transfer. 92% of that is on salaries that are in the Title I schools. So here's a different look to the November to May. We did not adjust in February the expense side, just the revenue. So I'm only showing you the November by type of spend, the blue charts. And then the line, the yellow line that's in between shows you where it fell in May. It went from a $650 million expenditure to 613 for two reasons. One is that we are spending less than we'd anticipated on our budget. And two, we were able to shift a lot of our expenses into the CARES Act when that $93 million CARES Act came in. And so that is going to go right to our cash balance. The two major areas, well, in salaries, were a little bit higher because we retained staff to help with health and safety, and we had higher employees because of our anticipated growth this year. Purchase services, there was about a $3.5 million savings there. And then the biggest drop was in supplies, that's where we had, in capital. We had a lot of those movement, those costs get transferred into the CARES Act. So we're able to save general fund monies to push into next year. Here's the long view of that. You can see the first bar is last year's actual. And then you can see a little bit dipped this year because of those two things that I just talked about. We're spending a little bit less and transferring money into a grant. And then you can see that we start growing back up. So we're starting to return for next year to the higher levels. That will adjust in November because we don't yet know what the CARES budget, complete CARES budget is going to be, but as we modify that, solidify that, and adopt it, then we can adjust what next year's general fund will look like. But just to show you that we're starting to grow the expenses because we're returning back to normal services and instruction and getting enrollment back. So tying that all together, the green bars are the revenues, you can see they're fairly flat. The line at the top is the expenses, expenditures. You can see where we were kind of sloping up, and then we dipped, and now we're starting to climb back up again. And the yellow line represent what happens to our cash. So when we spend more each year above our revenues, we start to erode our cash balance. And you can see that we've actually pushed that deficit that we typically have at the end of the forecast. We pushed it out one more year, this is in 2024, instead of the 23, so we're good there, as long as we don't spend that extra cash balance too quickly. So this, I think you saw this on Wednesday night. This is my way of showing that the pandemic money is wonderful help for us, $300 million. We don't get it in a savings account, and we don't have the big fat checking account. It's that we spend the money first and then get reimbursed by the state. But when those grants dry up, everything that we're spending that money on, we have to make a decision about whether we're going to scale back or bring it back to the general fund or find another funding source. So the example I gave you Wednesday night was our nursing contract. Pre-COVID, we were spending $1.7 million. The year of COVID, when we got student wellness money, we put $2.4 million. And so we moved that into the student wellness grant. Because when the governor created the student wellness, we thought it was going to be part of the general fund, but they decided to set it aside as a separate grant fund, so different bank account. We moved the nursing contract, $2.4 million into that grant. And then next year for COVID, that nursing contract has grown to $7.6 million. It's a $5 million increase, and we took that increase and put it in CARES. But when CARES stops and goes away, that $5 million, we're either going to have to redo service or bring it back to the general fund, and then that will have to displace something else, if that makes sense. So with that, I'll pause and answer any questions. And as I said before, the actual forecast is in the treasurer's report for adoption.
Do board members have questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Bolton.
Yeah, thank you, Jen, appreciate it. I just have a question, not a question, but a point of clarification. On the revenues chart or sheet, revenues FY '21, can you, on the pie chart, tell us, we're federal dollars, not CARES or whatever, where are any of the federal dollars we receive?
They're not, this, that, oh, the, that chart, that pie chart is strictly general fund because a forecast only addresses general fund monies. So all of our federal and state grants are in totally separate fund numbers that have their own bank accounts, so to speak.
And that's what I wanted just to be able to say, and maybe you said it and I missed it. Can you also then describe for us, for the public, and certainly for me and the board members, what kinds of monies, besides the CARES, and we'll ask that in a minute, and you were pretty good about coming up with that 300 million. What, what kinds of monies do we have that are non-general fund that are revenue from grants and federal government? If you could give that number to us.
Sure, we have about $107 million in state and federal grants that CPS gets, and there's more that gets passed through to our auxiliaries and not public schools, but 107 million that we manage. One example is a state grant of student wellness, it's about $12 million, growing to 15 million next year, we think. Title I is a federal fund that serves disadvantaged students. IDEA B is a federal fund that serves students with disabilities. We have an English Language Learner Grant. Head Start is a federal grant. Career Tech or Vocational Education, Perkins is a state grant, those kinds of things. But it's about $107 million on top of the general fund and CARES. So we're up to about $1 billion in revenues.
Exactly, and I think that's important for us to note, but you're right, this is only about the general fund, but there's this other, but it's earmarked for particular things, like you said.
Very restricted, yes, restricted revenues, yes, ma'am.
And a lot of it is totally student-centered, too.
Yes. Not all of it, like Title IIA is about improving teacher quality and for professional, we use a lot of money for professional development, but the majority of grants are student-centered, yes.
Okay, and then, and then finally on that, then for the, as you said, pass-through, so to speak, how much of the monies that either we get or come through to pass through, what percentage of the revenue that we get goes elsewhere? Yep. I think it's real important for the public to know that significant amount of our money.
I can remember a lot of numbers, but not everything. So of the state and federal grants total, 21 million goes to our private provider, our non-public and auxiliary service schools. Okay, and so out of the 129 in state and federal grants, 107 comes to us, and the rest goes to the non-publics. But when I refer to the pass-through on here, I was referring to the tuition deductions for community schools, scholarship, autism, Peterson, open enrollment tuition. So they just take that money right off the top before we see it.
If I might, Madam President, the other piece is the next time that we have, we know we have to go for a renewal, what year is that?
So November 22 will be our next renewal. It's a five-year, $51.5 million levy. We can make it, extend the year like we did on the last one, or we can make it a substitute and make it bigger value if we so choose, or we can make it a continuing, but, so we have some decisions to make on that. But November of '22, so we skip this November and then come back to the public for, and it'll be the third renewal on that levy.
And I skipped one question. Do we think that this five-year forecast will be able to keep us to that schedule and not necessarily go for new money?
Honestly, if we continue to grow the enrollment that we're growing and continue to create innovative programs without replacing other things, then we're going to have to go back for new money in the future.
So to grow and create, we also have to leave some stuff on the old shore, so to speak.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And you've been saying that to us, so I appreciate revisiting it because you have been saying that.
Thank you, every opportunity again, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Treasurer Wagner.
Superintendent?
Yes, so this is the celebration time of the year. I am so excited to introduce Josh Harden, and he's going to celebrate our athletes for this school year. So you know, normally we come in and we parade them through all the wonderful awards that they've won, and tonight we're going to do it just a little bit differently. But very excited to have Josh Harden, our manager for athletics.
Thank you.
We're in, all right. Thank you, Treasurer Wagner, for that help and that great presentation. And thank you Superintendent Mitchell for all your support over the years. Your impact will be felt for many years to come. Thanks, Board President Jones and the board for having us here today. Today, we'll present CPS Athletics Updates, highlighting our year this year and bouncing back and plans for the future. Next slide. Oh, I've got the clicker. So used to that next slide, there we go, that's me. All right, I would first like to recognize the hard-working team, Ricky Miller, Brent Langhorn, and Mary Hawkins, and our team that were graceful and driven throughout this year. To start the year, we had a summer prep series with all of our athletic directors called Adapt and Grow. We met together and planned for this very unique year. Great collaboration with the activities beyond the classroom. Brian Leschner, met with him on a weekly basis throughout this school year, talk about all the different changes and things that we needed to do to have a great school year for our student-athlete. And bounce back, like I said before, the start of the year, we had to adapt and grow. And about halfway through the year, we were in stride and decided that it was time to bounce back. Couple weeks after that, we saw that the board was doing the old shore and new shore, and aligned very well with our bounce-back initiative. Engagement, as we know on the engagement side of things, we've had an opportunity to connect with coaches, parents, student-athletes, and the community in a different way. A lot of town halls, Google meets, different things that we're looking forward to continue. As we talk about CPS Athletics, we did a lot of pilots and quality improvement this year from our coach engagement, a ramp-up of nutritional support, AAA pathway, which I'll talk about more in a second, and our team initiative, which I presented to SEC, where we talked about providing sports boosters programs at all of our schools. And of course, internal collaboration with the other departments within our district. Innovation, we had to adapt for our live streams to provide opportunities for all of our We had to adapt for our live streams to provide opportunities for all of our student-athletes to be seen, did that in an awesome way. And then promoting athletic websites. We launched new athletic websites for all of our schools in the district to highlight and promote our kids on a different level. Our strategic partnerships with our professional sports teams, the Bengals, Reds, and FC Cincinnati, has grown tremendously throughout these difficult times. Cletees for Kids had a great event at Riverview East last week where 119 students walked away last week with a new pair of shoes. Every K to sixth grader at Riverview East Academy thanks to the Cletees for Kids. It was phenomenal. We have a growing partnership with Cincinnati Children's Hospital, as well as TriHealth and Mercy Health, that provide the athletic training support at all of our schools. So the academic and athletic accountability pathway, as Board Member Bowers mentioned in the SAC meeting, this was our initiative that we were thinking big, starting small, and scaling fast. Somebody told me that one day. Yes, that was our initiative there. And since we started that initiative in 1819, we've seen ACT scores increase, student-athlete GPAs increase, support and resources around NCAA eligibility increase. We highlighted, we were highlighted at the Council of Great City Schools. Board Member Bates was there to watch the presentation, and there was a member from the Education Week magazine who wrote about our innovative and unique approach to supporting student-athletes. That was his words, not mine. An ACT boot camp, we had 125% increase from 16 to 36 students, with those great numbers that Board Member Bowers talked about with some of our students. We had a salt conference with one male and one female student-athlete who discussed resiliency and battling through adversity. We hosted our Beyond the Tassel, where we had reps from NCAA, NJCAA, and NIAA, and our male and female CPS alum. And probably our most exciting one is the Honest Game platform, which supports our students through college academic eligibility, tracks real-time academic progress, and provides in-depth detail to our students and families. That's currently piloting at four of our schools. Actually received a text message from our coach at Aiken today, who said this is one of the best programs he's ever been a part of. So really excited about that. And our heart and soul, the AAA pathway coaches, we're expecting a 93% retention of having one to two AAA coaches at every school that's offering support and guidance to our students. So that's just a little bit of what we've been doing this year. Now to the highlighting and promoting, I'd like to invite up Ricky Miller.
As we go through our highlights and promoting our student-athletes, just want to reiterate how proud we are, not only the kids, but the coaches, the administrators, parents, and communities, for getting through this year and making it something special. So we kicked off in the fall. Obviously, we were out of the building, but in light, we're able to use some innovative scheduling to allow our high school programs an opportunity, a football and a volleyball regular season inside the district that were both capped off with championship games. Volleyball had a tournament, and the special thing about football was they were all held at one facility, our brand-new Stargill Stadium in the West End. So that was great to see. Shout out to Western Hills for winning the football and Hughes High School for winning the volleyball. As we transitioned into winter, we were able to reintroduce our junior high programs and really get back on the normal, if you will. So we had 16 junior high schools and 28 teams participate in a regular season, obviously had a great number of games, and then back to our normal end-of-season tournament, which we held at Withrow High School. Shout out to Hughes High School and Woodward High School on winning their respective championships. And on the high school side of things, we were able to have a typical season with varsity programming. And then as we've already mentioned here tonight, just wanted to shout out our top senators for winning the regional championship this year, representing Cincinnati Public Schools in the state final four for Division III hoops. Really big stuff. As we transitioned into spring, we really saw things getting back to how they had been with 48 varsity teams participating in interscholastic competition across the city of Cincinnati. We had four different conference champions in the sports of baseball, softball, and track and field. Coming back to the innovative scheduling, that was a big piece of what we were able to do, allowing our kids to have more opportunities for competition and really getting out there. And then one of the things that we were incredibly proud of were the special events that we were able to get back to this year, which we'll hop into here in just a moment. And that goes hand-in-hand with highlighting and promoting our kids. So one of the big things that I focus on in our department is our Athlete of the Month program, where we honor and recognize model student-athletes that not only take care of business in the classroom, but also on the field and in their community and around the school. So to sum up the 2019 school year, we have a great partnership with the Reds Community Fund, who are a sponsor of the program, but we were able to get our 1920 Student Athletes of the Month cutouts at the Great American Ballpark for the entire season. And then, yeah, pretty awesome. And then we were able to transition into this school year, and really, you know, the innovative piece is something we take a lot of pride in. So we were able to still recognize our student-athletes on a seasonal basis, which we'll see in just a moment. And we've been able to do great videos and presentations with them and still award them and recognize them for the awesome things that they do. And then obviously, at the end of the school year, they'll all be eligible to win the Dave Dirker Scholarship as well. We've also done Beyond the Game videos, where we highlight and recap key football games, basketball games, volleyball games that have taken place in the district, and been able to share them on social media platforms. Josh mentioned live streaming events, and that was an awesome way for our parents, our communities, and all of our schools to be able to watch our teams compete without being at the facility, and something that we look forward to continue doing once we are able to up our capacities. And then we had innovative signing ceremonies and senior recognitions. We know that the seniors this year were dealt a tough hand, but we did the best that we could to still give them special opportunities to be recognized. I mentioned our Athletes of the Month. These are our fall and winter athletes of the month. We did six per season, which will ultimately end in 18 for the school year. So like I said, got a, had a chance to get out to those schools, meet all the kids, do special one-on-one interviews with them, and we're able to post them on social media platforms. So please, if you have an opportunity to go to our YouTube page, check out their videos this year. And then, for the very first time this year, we are ready to officially announce our Spring Athletes of the Month on our next slide. So big shout out to Jacob Harrison from Schroder, Taquan Stone Street from Western Hills, Philip Kogan from Walnut Hills, Elijah Todd from Euler, Davanaposey from Walnut Hills, and then Joyous McCory from Aiken High School. Congratulations on being named Athlete of the Month. I mentioned highlighting and promoting our senior nights and our college signings, and doing that in an innovative and safe way. And here, you'll see just a couple of our presentations where we were able to do some really cool stuff. And then also, right now, we are counting 48 seniors signed to participate in college athletics, and we expect that number to rise before the end of the school year as well. And then, we also talked about Maceo a little bit tonight already, but really, it's awesome when we have an opportunity to recognize our special alumni. And Maceo is one of those special alumni, class of Walnut Hills 2015, had an opportunity to watch him on the biggest stage, win a national championship with the Baylor Bears. And then to make it even more special, had an opportunity to invite Maceo back to Cincinnati, where he had a chance to throw out the first pitch out of Reds game. And in the same week, Cincinnati created a Maceo Tea Day. I mentioned special events earlier. Just recently, we held our Jackie Robinson Weekend, which we've done for about five years now. This year was really special because not only was this one of those first, you know, bigger special events where more students could come together up at the Reds Youth Academy, but Nike joined our event this year and sponsored the jerseys. So each kid, 161 students, was given a custom Nike jersey with Jackie Robinson's number 42 on the back. And then what made it even more special that weekend is we celebrated Gabby Rodriguez Day and had an opportunity to honor her. Each jersey also had a special 13, her number. And this year, we also presented the first two scholarships in her name with the help of her family at the event. I'll hand it back to Josh here to talk about future goals and initiatives.
Let's clap it up for all those student-athletes that were recognized, as well as for how proud I am of Ricky Miller and all of his great work and his presentation tonight. That was phenomenal. Bounce-back initiative. For us, that's how we're going to reevaluate all of our partnerships and contracts with the old shore and the new shore, as I discussed before. We're updating all of our manuals with a refocus on the strategic plan. We've got three pillars of foundational success in our department. One, set expectations and goals. Two, communicate intentionally and transparently. And then three, the big one, is accountability. Future goals on nutrition, growing from the pilot we have. Excited to say that I got a phone call tonight from Gatorade, we'll be receiving upward to $25,000 donation, where all of our student-athletes at all of our schools and our high schools will receive Gatorade products, shakes, bars to go home with them this summer. So clap it up for that partnership with Gatorade. It's huge. Just found that out literally an hour ago. Growth. Board Member Bolton asked about growth a little bit at the SAC meeting. Elementary growth and increased competition. We're looking to highlight more camps and clinics on the elementary level. And we mentioned the Innovate Grant, where we have the opportunity to bring more athletic trainers into our district. We're partnering with Mercy Health on the Innovate Grant that will be $180,000 over three years to provide a full-time athletic trainer at some of our smaller schools. Junior high and high school soccer growth with the partnership with FCC, esports, and really other activities. We know that everyone has a passion, and we just want to be in a position to provide more opportunities to our students so they can find that passion. The team initiative. We're going to work with our athletic directors, coaches, and parents and community members to really ramp up our community and parent support at all of our schools throughout the district. The AAA pathway. Through wellness funding, we're looking to solidify and grow the AAA pathway. And all the numbers that we presented tonight and the data tonight, we want to blow that out of the water going into the next few years. And then Dream Big. Through the Speak Up and Speak Out Initiative, the students in that organization did come to us and say they wanted a life skills curriculum implemented into our schools in the district. And at the same time, one of our staff members was working with one of our interns on a project called Dream Big. We sat down and realized that it aligned perfectly. So at this time, I would like to introduce Brent Langhorn, who's our elementary athletics coordinator, who actually stepped into the jack-of-all-trades role this year. But he has taken a phenomenal leadership on the Dream Big initiative, and he'll share a little bit more.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you to the board and Superintendent Mitchell for having us this evening. As Josh mentioned, the Dream Big program, it's a life skills course. It's a project I've been working on here for a couple of months now. It's an in-school curriculum-based program designed to provide tools and resources for students to stay beyond the classroom. Program details include teacher-led lesson plans that will guide students to identify who they are, what they want from life, and a plan to make it a reality. Videos, articles, and activities within each lesson plan to provide students with equitable tools and resources to complete activities and identify their dreams and goals for life. The Virtual Resource Center, where students will have access to resources and activities after they complete the course, whether that's in class, after school, or at home via the Dream Big Resource Center, that helps build their future. And then moving on, some of the learning outcomes that are included in the Life Skills Course, identifying purpose, personality, style, character strengths, relationship goals with family and friends, identifying learning styles, money management skills, healthy life choices physically and mentally, civic engagement, mental strength through adversity, self-awareness, confidence, and determination, time management skills. You know, this project is certainly a team effort in collaboration with Liz Wolf and Emily Campbell, as well as CPS staff. I've reached out to many teachers and staff members that I've worked with in the past to get feedback from them on how we can make this curriculum great. So if you guys have, you know, any ideas, definitely my email, phone number is wide open. You can reach out to me in terms of this curriculum, but I'm very excited with a goal to pilot this next spring. So, you know, please let me know if you have any more questions, and thank you.
And just in closing, we know this year was difficult. We had to adjust, adapt, and shift at many times throughout the year. Through this time, we were able to engage and reengage our staff, students, and community, and make choices that were always student-centered. Our team of coaches, volunteers, athletic supporters, and of course, our hard-working athletic directors were extremely dedicated and agile and went above and beyond throughout the year. So big thanks to all of them. If we could clap it up for all the coaches, athletic directors, and athletic supporters. We wish the most success to our great class of 2021 and look forward to providing more support and resources to all of the student-athletes coming back next year. The future is bright for CPS Athletics.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. And to your team, open it up, questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Bowers.
My favorite area a little bit. Thank you, Josh, and thank you all for presenting. This was very informative. I get excited about athletics a little bit. The Dream Big curriculum, can that be tailored to our students in the DDS department curricular-wise? Would they be able to partake in this curriculum also? The students, Department of Developmental, no, Department of DDS, or DSS, I mean DSS. Student Services is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, so our next step is to meet with Carrie Bunger, Emily Campbell. Liz Wolf has identified all the different managers and directors that might be instrumental in making this Dream Big and Life Skills Course the most impactful it can be for our kids in the district. So that's our next step. Brent's been doing a lot of behind-the-scenes work, but we're going to bring all the managers and directors together to identify the best way for all of us to collaborate to impact students throughout CPS.
And then the last question, and this is most important, Mr. Harden. With the live stream, I did not get my athletic fetish mats over the season because I had to go to each school. Is there any way to put all of that together and I can pick what to watch if I'm not able to get to a game?
Yes, so what I was talking about with the athletic websites, each school will have their own athletic website now, and CPS Athletics will have a district-wide athletic-focused website. So we worked with Office of Communication and Engagement to make sure everything was good there. And so this CPS Athletics page will have a master schedule. You'll be able to go on our page, and it'll take the schedules from every individual school and have one master schedule where you have the opportunity to see when every single school in our district is playing any athletic activity. And we'll give you the opportunity to be able to check which one you will livestream or which one you will attend.
Okay, perfect.
We'll make sure that we have you taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you. Very impressive report, both in SAC and tonight as well. I have like four kind of aggregate questions that are, I wouldn't say big picture, but it might give us some indication. Overall, how many students are involved in athletics district-wide? This is an estimate. I know you've referred to it on a couple of occasions.
Yeah, it has fluctuated this year. We've got 500 coaches, and I believe our last run was 2,500, right about 2,500 student-athletes in high school.
That's great. And we have, how many, how many, would you estimate how many volunteers participate in our athletic programs besides the, and some of those 500 coaches, I don't know if they're paid or not paid, but it really is a big volunteer base that we have that help us with our athletics.
Sure. Yeah, so the 500 that I addressed was paid coaches. So in addition to that, you know, schools range on a number of sports and activities, obviously. Our Walnut Hills has a lot more sports and activities, and some of our smaller schools, Spencer's growing. And the team initiative is to focus on the volunteer support from parents. But I'd say, you know, we're looking at anywhere from five on our lower school side upward to 2,530 on the higher side of the bigger school.
Great, thank you. And then my last question, and this, like our PTAs and what have you, how many of our schools have booster clubs? how many of our schools have booster clubs? Or what you would kind of think of as a booster club, or even close to it?
Sure. So as of present, prior to the Team Initiative kind of kicking off, we had one true school that had an athletic boosters program that was established. That's Clark High School. There were a couple of other schools that have had it previously, Walnut Hills, Hughes, but nothing established this year outside of Clark. So the Team Initiative is a way for us, through the Athletic Department, to have some control and ability to oversee, to make sure that the impact would align with the community and parents and administration and everybody kind of working together. We just find that a lot of time, those organizations ebb and flow with the parents that are leading those organizations. Then you have those top parents leave the organization and you're trying to play catch-up sometimes, right? So we want to have the consistency by having our staff have some leadership in those organizations so we have more consistency in those organizations.
Is there anything that we can do or whatever? I know you're trying very hard. That's so important in other school districts and other buildings to have a booster club, so to speak. And that's great family engagement.
Yeah, that's the top priority for the summer with the athletic directors, to finalize and establish all of the key roles of the Team Initiative. And then hopeful to work with the Office of Communication Engagement to then push it out into the community to let them know about the Team Initiative, the importance of it, like you mentioned, Board Member Bolton.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say, I've seen this program grow and improve and get better. And just this presentation in and of itself is dynamic in the sense that all the additional supports that you have offered, the program has offered for our students and families. So I commend you and your staff. And I especially want to thank you because I can remember sitting at the table when Gabby Rodriguez's parents were talking to us about that. And you saw it to fruition. So thank you for that especially.
Thank you.
So, all right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your presentation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so we're ready to move on to hearing the public. We are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Each speaker will have two minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Consistent with the board's bylaws, the board has the ability to limit the hearing of the public on any single issue and will exercise the right to do so if needed. Once a request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol and we appreciate your compliance. We reserve the right to not permit you to speak if you do not comply. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, their time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the livestream meeting. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. Thank you. How many speakers?
Good evening, Madam President. We have five speakers this evening.
Okay.
We will be starting with Ruth DeBono, followed by Christopher Melgrove. Ruth, go ahead. Ruth, we're not able to pick up your microphone.
Go ahead, Ms.
We're going to come back to Ruth. We're going to come back to Ruth. Ruth, keep trying to work on your microphone. And we're going to go to Christopher Melgrove.
What happened? I don't know.
Christopher, go ahead.
Yes. I wanted to speak today about the Summer Scholars Program. I was really excited when I heard about it. I'm about to turn my camera on right now.
Yes, please.
It's coming on right now. But the thing is, we said we were going to have this program available for all students pre-K through 12th grade. I was very excited for it for my daughter in pre-K. Reached out to the school and they said, hey, we're not offering pre-K summer school here. So I'm just disappointed because it seemed like CPS advertised something and just didn't have the intention of providing those services. And we advertised it on our website, through the Herald, and other places. So I hope that we can do something about it. I talked to the parents in my daughter's preschool class at Evanston Academy, and it's something that they would look forward to as well. So why it wasn't offered to us when it said it would be, why it's not provided, why we weren't given alternatives is just very disheartening. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Our next speaker is Yusuf Manir, followed by Ozzy Davis, followed by Ruth DeBono. Go ahead.
Hello, can you all see and hear me?
Yes.
We can, okay, yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Yusuf. You all still know who I am. I'm the president of Young Activist Coalition. Today, we demonstrated in front of the school board building by placing 100 lunchboxes out in front of the building. Each of those lunchboxes represented four kids that you failed, four CPS students that were entered into the criminal legal system because of your personal failures in the role of, as a school board member. That's four students every year who have had their presence and their futures and their dreams and hopes stolen from them because you all were so dedicated to implementing a plan that had no basis in fact, no basis in evidence, no basis in community support, despite what you all continue to hide behind. We were there because for the past year, we have shown up, we've spoken, we've demanded, we've met with you privately, all because we recognize that there is a problem. We recognize that there is also a clear solution. And that clear solution is removing Cincinnati Police Department and the SROs from CPS schools and removing zero-tolerance discipline from CPS schools and replacing them with an actual restorative justice, as well as the increased hiring of support staff in the form of psychologists, counselors, and social workers. I'm very excited to hear that CPS has some extra funds for this year. I would very much like to see those go to something that are actually good for students, something like the hiring of, just saying, increased mental health supports like counselors, social workers, psychologists, especially because most CPS schools are severely lacking. Most, if not all CPS schools are severely lacking in all of these and are still disproportionately punishing Black and Brown students.
Thank you.
I want you all to know that we're at the point where we are no longer asked.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ozzy David, followed by Ruth DeBono.
Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Hey, Board Member, Board President Jones, good to see you. Hey, Board Members, I miss you all. The last couple of meetings, I've gotten on too late to speak because of other issues. Laura, I love you. Thank you for all that you have blood, sweat, and tear into this district and the kids. I haven't had a chance to publicly say to you how much I care for you and your leadership and how sorry I am that you are leaving us and happy I am that you are staying to continue to impact our region. Jen, I tell you, that fire forecast was exciting, but you know when Josh Harden speaks, I'm listening. And that presentation, my brother Josh Harden, was incredible. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, Yusuf would kill me if I don't speak, because I was supposed to be at his rally two weeks ago, two meetings ago, if I don't speak on getting the police and SROs and that contract renegotiated. I do believe there's reform necessary. Those statistics, five to one, speak directly to a necessary reform. I'm not certain it means police out of the schools. I wouldn't go that far, but I do think the board should really reopen that contract and look at it wholeheartedly so that we don't have statistics that peril five to one. That's just out of hand. I love you guys. I appreciate you guys. Thanks for all the things that you do for our students. One thing on sports, I really appreciate how we love Macio. But we got some kids right now that needs more love from CPS. We've got a top 20 kid in Paul McMillan IV. We got a top 10 kid in Rayvon Griffiths at TAF. These kids are the top players in the country, and we shouldn't wait till they win a national championship to honor them. And I don't want to miss my alma mater and the best ninth grader in the state of Ohio, Tyler McKinley.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
USA.
Thank you.
God bless you all. God bless you all.
How do you cut off?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruth DeBono, followed by Julie Sellers. If Julie will accept the invite, please.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a junior at Walnut Hills High School, and I'm going to talk to you about SROs in our schools. 400 students a year are being introduced into the criminal legal system directly because of the SROs in our schools. We, the CPS board repeatedly uses the phrase "speaking up and speaking out" to act as if it is truly listening to its students. But when we come on here for months, you ignore us simply because you do not like what we have to say. We cannot say that it's hard to remove officers from our schools when that is what is necessary for the safety of students, for our futures, and for our lives. It is the, our safety, lives, and futures is not something that is up for deliberation. You were elected, the board was elected to help protect us and to serve us, and it is not something, it is not up for deliberation. The statistics show, which come directly from a public records request from the Cincinnati Police Department, show clearly the disproportionate discipline on, for Black and Brown students in CPS and the harm caused by SROs in our schools. We have been on here for months telling you that there is a problem. You clearly know that there is a problem, and we are also offering a solution. It is not, it is a disservice to your students and community when there is clearly community support for this, which you claim to care about but ignore when it's supporting something that the board does not agree with. And it is necessary that you listen to what the community is asking for and show that you do value the safety and futures of your students.
Madam President, that is our last speaker for the evening. Ms. Sellers has withdrawn, so we are ready for her.
Okay, thank you. All righty, so we'll move on to board matters. I believe, Ms. Bolton, you were going to talk about transportation.
Yes, thank you. Just kind of our usual routine. We did receive, I think, a good report regarding transportation finance in finance committee, particularly as the contracts are proceeding. We still don't know necessarily about the state's efforts or exactly how much, we're talking in terms of how the Taylor County Education Service Center will play a role. But it would appear that we feel comfortable about the Metro contract moving forward as they are negotiating it. And Mr. Johnson and also Sarah Trimmer Oliver discussed changes in the van and yellow vendors' contracts to hopefully make them more accountable to us. I think we still remain somewhat concerned about shared customer relations and customer contact being shared between the vendors and the district. And it remains a huge item. And I don't know if the treasurer is willing to kind of tell us what the initial numbers have been regarding the cost of transportation. It would only be a ballpark at this point in time. And we did receive also on-time estimates and surveys. And then, of course, this is the very day that happened. There were, you know, buses were late in at least a couple of our schools, but that's, I guess, to be expected. So I don't know if the treasurer wanted to share any more information about the financial aspects of transportation, but it would appear that we are also ready to deliver the service that is needed for summer scholars, which we've been assured of, and also the amount that is evolving for the transportation costs as we start the new school year.
So don't quote me on this because it went off the top of my head, but I think the budget for next year is $49 million. That's returning to full service with the healthy starts fully implemented. And I can't remember the value of the summer scholars, but I want to say it's $5 million, but I'm guessing, I can't remember.
And how much of, for the summer scholars, is any of that CARES money? Because we are recouping the loss of learning?
It's all, entire summer scholars budget, so the CARES Act budget.
So, thank you. So the board is anticipating then, did you say, a cost estimate of 40-some million, did you say?
I think next year's estimate's $49 million for the whole department and service completely.
And that's all the contracts and, as you said, the service?
Yes, for the regular school year, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone have any kudos? Ms. Flowers?
Yes. Thank you, President Jones. I would like to give kudos to Assistant Superintendent Shauna Murphy and her team on their success with the Level Up Collaboration. Apparently, this collaboration is an initiative ever between the Cincinnati Urban League, Southwest Ohio, CAA, Easter Seals, and CPS, My Tomorrow Ed. And it is an employment readiness and life skill training in the efforts of creating postgraduate employment for those ages 16 through 24. So kudos to Assistant Superintendent Murphy and her team in their collaboration.
Thank you. Any other kudos? All righty, Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, I have several retirements to acknowledge this evening from our certificated personnel, Veronica K. Cotton, Gloria J. Frost, Alaric A. Harris, and Lori J. Wyant Zenny, who are all teachers. And we thank them for their service to our children and wish them well. Congratulations.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we're about to present our resolutions. And before we get started, I would like, this is the time for a special announcement. I would just like to read a short statement. While I'm reading the statement, Ms. Amat, would you please come down? I'll go ahead while she's making her way. On behalf of the Cincinnati Public School Board of Education, I am excited to announce Deputy Superintendent Tiana Amat as our interim superintendent, following the resignation of Superintendent Laura Mitchell. The Board of Education members look forward to working with Ms. Amat and continuing our successes as we set our attention on closing educational gaps this summer and reopening in the fall. Ms. Amat's intimate knowledge of the district's concerns, challenges, and successes will quickly help bridge the gap during this transition as we search for and select our new superintendent. We are grateful to the district staff, teachers, and community for their patience, their professionalism, their grace, and their resilience during this time. So before we present the resolution, I just wanted you, if you want to have the opportunity, just to comment?
I am honored to stand before you today to accept the position as interim superintendent. I look forward to the work ahead. We will continue the focus of putting students first in the CPS. in the CPS, CPS future is bright. And thank you so much to Superintendent Mitchell for all of your support and passing the baton, and I'm ready to go. Thank you.
Okay, so the board, board members, we have a resolution before us, and in the way that we typically do in good fashion, we'd like to do around. So if you could, I'm sorry. I thought I did do forty-eight hour waiver to amend the, I did. And I added the resolution.
You amended the agenda, but not the forty-hour waiver for the resolution.
How did I miss that? It's in writing, so I missed it. Okay. So, Ms. Bates, would you please introduce the forty-eight hour waiver?
I have to do that again, right?
Do that again, please.
I move a forty-eight hour waiver for the resolution to appoint Tiana Amat as interim superintendent.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
I think we need a resolution, a forty-eight hour waiver on the tax advance resolution as well.
I want to make a correction. I read this. I said, I need a motion for a forty-eight hour waiver to revise the agenda, adding two resolutions to this evening's agenda. I read this.
Okay, so you combined it in the same motion. Okay, my apologies.
That's okay.
Did we vote on that, though?
Yeah.
Well, you did a voice vote instead of roll call.
Yeah. Okay.
We need a roll call.
Okay, so if we could, there, so the, the motion needs to be to accept the forty-eight hour waiver to revise the agenda, adding the two resolutions. Do I need to specify the resolution?
Mm-hmm.
One is the resolution to appoint Ms. Amat. The second resolution is the appropriations. Is that which one?
It's the, the tax advance rates.
The tax, the tax rates.
Yep.
Forty-eight hour, forty-eight hour waiver.
Correct.
I need a motion.
And I will add the resolution for the revision of the tax rates. Thank you, my motion.
Okay, great. And is there a second? There's a motion. I need a second. Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
This is Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
This is Bowers.
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mr. John, or President Jones, sorry.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. A little confusing. Okay, so, Ms. Bowers?
Yes, I will begin the resolution, reading the resolution to appoint Tiana Amat as interim superintendent, whereas Superintendent Laura Mitchell submitted her resignation to the Board of Education on May tenth, twenty twenty-one. The Board of Education appreciates Superintendent Mitchell's leadership over the past four years and wishes her well in her future endeavors. And?
Ms. Bates?
Whereas the Board of Education announced on May tenth, twenty twenty-one, that it would appoint an interim superintendent while the board conducts a more extensive search for the position of superintendent. And?
Whereas the Board of Education considered internal candidates for the position of interim superintendent, finding that both candidates possessed excellent credentials and strong leadership skills. And?
Whereas Tiana Amat presently holds the position of deputy superintendent and is responsible for supervising directors of school leadership and school principals. Ms. Amat supervises four departments, curriculum, early childhood testing, and the Office of Accountability and Research. Previously, Ms. Amat was the principal of CPS's Hyde Park School and held administrative positions in Lakota and Princeton School Districts. Ms. Amat possesses all the qualities the board feels are needed to lead the school district during this transitional period. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Cincinnati Board of Education resolves to name Tiana Amat to the position of interim superintendent. Okay, it's been, the resolution's been presented as a motion. I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
This is Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Congratulations, Ms. Amat.
Thank you. Thank you. So the next resolution, Mr. Morosky. It is the City of Cincinnati Department of Health?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It is my honor to present a resolution thanking the City of Cincinnati Department of Health for partnering with Cincinnati Public Schools during the COVID-19 crisis. And while I'm not in the habit of reading all of these, nor any of us, I'm just going to read some pieces of it, if that's okay. We could not have made it this far. I won't say through because we're still there, but couldn't have made it this far without them, and we're not going to be able to make it to the finish line without them. So thank you, Cincinnati Health Department. It's a real honor to read this for y'all, being that I worked with you in my, my other life, too. Whereas the Board of Ed is grateful for its partnership with Cincinnati Health Department. Under leadership of Dr. Melville Moore, Health Department provided steady guidance to us. Whereas, the help of the Health Department, CPS became the largest school district in Ohio and one of the only large city school districts in the country to open its doors to students for in-person instruction in October, twenty twenty. Whereas, the Health Department helps CPS to implement widespread COVID-19 testing for students. Health Department nurses were assigned to every CPS school, which allowed for onsite testing of students. Whereas, the Health Department provide regular updates and guidance to school districts at every stage of the crisis. Doctors Maurice Amin and Grant Mustman provided regular updates. Meetings of the Board of Ed and Kim Wright participated on countless calls with administration. Whereas, with the assistance of the Health Department, CPS became the first district in the state of Ohio to offer vaccinations to its employees. The Board of Ed appreciates especially the nurses from the Health Department, Rita Porter, Stacy Wills, and Jenny Scott, who spent countless hours vaccinating our employees. Therefore be it resolved, the Board of Ed thanks the contributions of the Cincy Health Department, doctors, administrators who helped us. Forever grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky.
I present the resolution as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion? I just want to add, I was informed that there was every intention of the nurses being here to receive this resolution. But because they are so busy and have been busy all day in the schools, I'm sure they're pretty tired. But the board will make sure, as I understand, this is going to be framed and presented to them from the board. So I just wanted to share that. Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
This is Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
Yes, I have a resolution authorizing, and I believe it might have been a typo on this resolution, but it's for twenty twenty-one through twenty-two membership into the Ohio High School Athletic Association. I present this resolution as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
This is Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Ms. Bolton, the next resolution, please.
Yes, I have two, and I think this is the one that comes next. And that is, I have a resolution that I am presenting regarding fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, amended appropriations resolution I present, and hope for approval.
Yes, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
This is Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Ms. Bolton, next and last resolution?
Yes, and in fairness to the board, this was introduced recently, and it's pro forma, but it's something that has to be done. And that is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. I present it, hope for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
This is Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I do. A very short report. Always like to highlight our students and things that are happening for our kids. So next slide, please. So, our students ages fifteen, I'm sorry, twelve years old and older have the opportunity to be vaccinated where at CPS today and tomorrow. Students will be able to have a vaccination in our high school, and they will receive their second dose in June, mid-June. So we're very excited about that. Again, a huge thank you to the Cincinnati Health Department, as well as Children's Hospital and TriHealth. All right, public, if you have a preschooler or a kindergartner, someone who's approaching kindergarten, please enroll in CPS. You can enroll in preschool or kindergarten, June first through the thirtieth, from eight thirty a.m. until three p.m. weekdays, here at the Education Center or at the Leap Academy on Baltimore, Rising Stars at Carthage on North Bend, Rising Stars at Cheviot at Westwood on Mozart Avenue, and Rising Stars at Vine on Vine Street. No appointment is necessary, so please, please, please register your preschooler or kindergartner. And we had a virtual art show. So for many years, we had an art show where students would be able to display their artwork. And this year, we had a virtual art show displaying two hundred and five different art pieces representing thirty-nine different schools. Now, this is a citywide virtual art show. We're very excited to be able to host this under the direction of Dr. Izzy Rupnik. And last but not least, the last day of school is May twenty-seventh. We're almost there. There are over eleven thousand kids who have signed up for summer scholars, which will run June second through the thirtieth, and transportation is provided. So, parents, you're watching, you need transportation, three-six-three ride, if you have any questions about it. And we're excited that school will resume August the nineteenth. And that's all I have for my report, in addition to the written recommendations.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you very much. Sort of discussion and also an inquiry. I may have missed it, but I know we've been talking about having at least not a list of names, but the number of teachers at each school that are going to be doing the summer scholars. And I honestly may have missed that list. We didn't want individual names, but we wanted to see the numbers of, of, of teachers. And if I've missed it, I'm sorry, but if we, if it hasn't happened yet, it'd be great to have it.
So I believe, as our interim superintendent is coming forward, I believe this came as an assignment out of student achievement?
Yeah.
An email was sent by our Director of Curriculum, Emily Campbell, I believe, the date was May sixteenth, possibly.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. The other comment I have about the summer scholars, this probably isn't, how shall I say it? Once the community has had this opportunity, we better be thinking in terms of having an additional month of school. It's just going to, and there's not going to necessarily be CARES money to support it or to be able to pay people per diem. But this is going to be looked upon, because it's going to be successful. I just think that even, we should be thinking in terms of, the budget probably has to be able to think about this and be part of this. And certainly, it'll have to be months of kind of engagement to test if that's true. But I'm just saying, this is such a boon to so many families and children, I think we need to anticipate it as being perhaps a priority, or at least a suggestion. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Did we motion, did we put a motion on the floor? Okay, we were in discussion. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Wagner?
This is Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
This is Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, so as we move on to inquiries and updates, Ms. Bates?
Yes, I have a motion I'd like to make that's kind of of an emergency nature. And so I will read the motions first, and then I will make the motion for the forty-eight hour waiver. I move that all Cincinnati Public School Montessori students rising to the seventh grade shall be offered a seat and enrolled in a CPS Montessori High School if that is their choice. I move the forty-eight hour waiver.
Okay, so there is a motion for the forty-eight hour waiver. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, this, Treasurer Wagner?
This is Bates.
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, I move.
Yes, go ahead.
The motion as, as read.
Yep.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Yes, is there discussion? And if you could, for my purpose and everything, just give a general overview of what the situation is and why you're acting on that?
Yes, this, to my knowledge, this is the first year that we have not assigned students to one of the Montessori high schools. A complaint in, in the past has been that the Eastside kids, there was room for them at Clark, so they were assigned to Gamble. I'm not sure of any, you know, we were not notified of any policy changes. As a matter of fact, when Walnut was seeking to reduce their enrollment, I made the prediction that this was going to come down to the Montessori schools next. We just can't squeeze our students out. And we need to find room for the students who have been with us and want to continue with us. And those who are trained in Montessori, those students should be able to continue in Montessori. And if we need to add classrooms, and again, I've said this for many years, we may need to add a third Montessori High School. But we can't afford to be turning students away, especially, especially now, and because this is kind of a new turn of events, that we're turning away Montessori High School students. So I feel very strongly that we accept all of our Montessori students rising to the seventh grade into one of our Montessori high schools.
Okay, any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Bowers?
I have an inquiry for administration. Is that okay during this time?
We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, well, I want to discuss about.
Okay, well, you can ask. It's in discussion.
Do we, do we know that, I guess I'm kind of surprised that we are overcrowded at one of our Montessori schools that was looking to grow. Does anybody know from administration, the numbers, especially for Gamble, that there are no spaces at Gamble within the last two years?
I'm going to ask our Chief of Communications, enrollment is under her shop, to come forward to speak to that.
I was just trying to look at specific numbers, which I can maybe get you after the board meeting, but I do know that there was a waitlist. But yeah, why don't I, if it's okay, I'll get you specific numbers. And we can expand beyond Gamble if helpful.
Yeah, thank you. So I'd like to just pose a question for Ms. Bates. So, do you have knowledge of, for the kids who are waiting, are they, are, are they waiting on a Montessori school of their choice? Or could they, for example, can they go to, is it that there's a waitlist, or they can't get in?
For both schools.
Okay.
For both schools.
Okay.
And certainly after spending ten million dollars plus on renovating one of our Montessori high schools two years ago, we we certainly should be able to accommodate our families.
Okay. You answered my question. Thank you. Ms. Bates? Ms. Bolton?
Um, yeah, I, this, this precedes our current superintendent, but I will tell, uh, kind of a, uh, a story, uh, at least at one of our, uh, Montessori high schools. Um, and it was at Clark. There actually used to be where certain members of the staff and the leadership team would actually go through the list of students and families and make certain choices. As well documented, it happened all along. And fortunately, that leadership team is long gone, but that is what starts to happen. And part of it is, our Montessori high schools do consider themselves, you know, kind of magnets. And we, and we might wanna look at that as a policy piece, because those are different stipulations for magnets versus, and frankly, Walnut's not considered a magnet. So, there's all kinds of interesting things that maybe we can refer that to policy, but at least my understanding is that there's not to be a waitlist for any of our children that have gone through the Montessori process in our own district. They have been guaranteed placement at those, at our two, uh, Montessori high schools. And frankly, as Mrs. Bates has mentioned, at least eight years ago, and then again, six years ago, we're gonna need a third Montessori High School. The simple is that, it has to be part of our growth plan. And I hope that we're not making any decisions to limit our growth, even though it is, as the treasurer mentioned, we, we, we don't get the same amount of money, and it doesn't grow as our growth grows. But, uh, final thing, I know in our whole family, uh, where you live determined which of the Montessori, your address determined which Montessori elementary you want to. And I think we have to be looking at some of that as part of the Meridian piece to East and West, which is also part of the justification of the wonderful thing that happened with the, uh, advent of, uh, Gamble. And particularly, that leading the path, as I recall, on the West Side was, uh, our colleague, Mrs. Bowers, uh, for making that happen. So, I'm pleased to be able to vote for this motion and for maybe some reference to policy later.
Okay, thank you. So, the motion's on the floor. Any other discussion? Okay, Ms., uh, I'm sorry, Treasurer Wagner? Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones? Yes. Motion carries. Okay, so we're at inquiries and updates, and, uh, uh, go ahead, Mr. Morosky.
I just had a follow-up, uh, to an inquiry I, or assignment, I can't remember which it was, uh, a number of weeks ago about, uh, another Montessori, the Gamble Montessori Elementary, and what the possibility would be for a different sort of ingress egress. And I had brought up the Westward Northern piece and was reminded that that was closed off because it is so dangerous, and that we would look at other options for that. I'm just curious if...
Yes, so Sarah Trumpo Oliver did look into that. She's not here this evening, but I will make sure that you get the information tomorrow.
Rock on. Great, thank you so much.
Sorry about that.
No, you're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other inquiries and updates? Uh, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, just one. Uh, uh, and we've talked about this before. I know the superintendent's been interested in this as well. And that is the, uh, need, and we've reported it before, a need for preschool seats on the East Side. And there are some options, and I, I want to emphasize the possibility of a PK8 over in the John P. Parker area, including the Lighthouse, uh, built, current Lighthouse building, as long as those students can be accommodated properly. So, I just wanna keep that on the, on the tray, so to speak, as we determine. And we, we've gone through committee with it, you know, for the need. And I think it's, uh, it would be good to also plan as that part of the budget. Thank you.
So, if I could speak to that. So, the administration has, um, talked about, um, looking at possibilities on the East Side of town, looking specifically at Lighthouse, and also keeping in mind the fact that that's a growing area. And there's a charter school there. And so, uh, we are looking at a couple of different possibilities for, um, Lighthouse, not for the 2021, 22 school year, which is in August, but the following school year.
Thank you. So, I'd like to take an opportunity, um, board members, this is Superintendent Mitchell's last official board meeting. I, I don't know why she's acting like she's happy or something. Go on and show that, go ahead. I know, but, um, I, I just really, I really, uh, Superintendent, just wanna take the opportunity to wish you well, and I know you're, you're, you're gonna do great things at PJ Chris. I know that. And, um, I know Jim Mason well, and I know he's retiring, and you're coming on board, but, um, there, there are good people out there, and I, I know you will thoroughly enjoy it. And, uh, I really appreciate what you have done for us, and I think all board members do, but I just wanted to take this one last time, and I'm gonna stand and... Thank you so much. Alrighty. Okay, so we're at assignments. Any assignments? No? Oh, God, okay. Mr. Morosky first?
All right, I have, um, 17 assignments. I have three assignments. Uh, the first one is, and this was inspired by my employer, and I don't know if we do this, so pardon my ignorance. I apologize. And actually, hold on a second. Remind it wouldn't matter, forget, I'm gonna skip that one for now. Um, I only have two now. I only have two. How about that? See how good I, see how good I am? First one is, I got a great email from a number of students at Fairview, um, who had done some research, um, and acquired, uh, some information from our curriculum committee, and sent me a very, very nice email with their teacher copied, uh, in graphs about the representation in the Witten Wisdom curriculum, the ELA curriculum. And I, I'd be happy to share this presentation with whoever the heck wants to see it. It, it's really, really well done. And, um, and it, it told me, nothing surprising, but somewhat disturbing as far as representation um, in the curriculum. And I know we just adopted a new one, so I was wondering, my assignment really, I probably could have done this under inquiries and updates, I guess, if anyone would be amenable to me forwarding it to them, so they could look at it. Maybe we could have another talk. I can send it to Phyllis to send, actually, the administration and the board. Um, it is really, really well done. And I think, in looking at it, if, again, probably not surprising to any of us, but seeing it, especially they did a whole, they went to the, to the, the links of the, the protagonists in stories, race, gender identification, and it's largely people who look like me. Um, so anyhow, um, cool, I will, then I'll send, I guess, as an assignment to myself. The next one is not an assignment to myself, uh, and it's kind of similar to what Ms. Bolton was talking about, the number of teachers. But mine is, if there would be a way, and during this budget process where we are now, and I feel, I feel good about that process, first of all, and thank you, Jen, for your presentation tonight and getting us to this point. Um, if we could get, uh, a current, like, the number of counselors, psychologists, social workers, nurses, and security guards, similar, again, along the lines of Eve, but for psychologists, social workers, nurses, security guards, counselors, um, and then break down, uh, for the individual schools. Um, if we could get that, that'd be great. And again, as we look, old shore, new shore, y'all are used to hearing me talk about the restorative practice, you know, getting away from punishment, uh, trying to, different ways of approaching discipline. So, I, that would be instructive for me, if we could do that. Great, thank you.
Can we just make sure we got the positions right? We got counselors, social workers, nurses, security guards, and psychs? By schools.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
By school?
By school, yeah.
So, you should have received an email that delineated all of that information by school, so if you didn't receive it, I can double check with Ms. Davis. It was sent to her to forward on.
Okay.
When did we get that?
Okay. Okay, so take a look at the emails. If something's missing, we probably, like, Ms. Bowers is saying she doesn't know what the security guard's on there, but she's saying that it's in our email.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think there was that resource chart. Was that how it was titled, Cam? I think that was great. I think, again, part of that issue, uh, too, is us finding a way, and that resource chart starts to do it. Um, somehow, building in the complement, the supplement, if you will, of community learning centers or private partners, school-based health centers. I think that a lot of the focus from the public, particularly the young people that are, are still concerned about this, uh, many of these social issues and the services that we provide, doesn't really show up on the website. Uh, it doesn't really show up the additional kinds of things that we have. I think they might just be looking at employee, employment or what have you, let alone the increase. But, um, I think that that would be a great thing to be able to look at in this year, as the school year gets started, is finding that, you know, that big old chart, school by school. And I think this resource chart starts to get there, but may have to go even deeper on, on, on the, um, resources that are available. Because other districts don't have that. And that has to impact our ability to serve the kids and families without general fund dollars.
Thank you. Any other assignments? Yes, Ms. Bates?
Yes, I'd like to make the assignment to policy to review the magnet school, high school, uh, policy, and, and I don't wanna limit it to Montessori, because we may, I mean, we have children in the gifted Chevyat program who may wanna walk, move over to Spencer. Um, I don't know if there are any other schools. I know SCPA has their own, but that's worth looking at once more.
Yep.